I'll defer to Chris.
Can't you hear me? I have a bad habit of not turning this microphone on. Does it work?
We got.
First thing on agenda is actually San Dollar Drive and Herring Drive was actually put for bids by Right Angle Engineering. And the low bid for those projects, Highland Haven, at one hundred and forty-nine five total price tag. He actually had three bidders. One of them was RJ Norris, Barn Hill. RJ Norris, two seventeen nine fifty, two thirty-three, three hundred with Barn Hill. And I was asking the board if they maybe approved the contract payment. Those streets are actually covered in this year's budget. So don't require a budget amendment or any additional funding or anything like that. And it's kind of what we've done in the past for, I'd say, the last fifteen years. We've actually been paid with those streets every year. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them. And if we need Right Angle Engineering, I can also reach him by phone. He's not able to be in person.
Yes, sir.
Quick question, Chris. I looked at one of the, I guess it was the second bid, and I noticed they were talking about fixing thirty feet of sidewalk and stuff. Was that part of what Right Angle wanted done with this paving?
I'm not aware of any sidewalk or anything, but he may be talking about the curb and right there outside of Fairland Drive. It's got that asphalt curb, but I'm not aware of any sidewalk work.
So I saw the difference, and I saw on Highland paving, they said we weren't doing any concrete work. So I guess the bottom line question is Shane thinks he's, that Highland will do all the stuff that he's got on the plans that we asked for.
And I will say, we've used them for probably the last, I'd say, maybe at least eight years. And we've never had any issues with them before. But like I said, if there's anything that you need him to speak to or whatever, I can reach him by phone. I'll call him before the meeting to make sure he's available.
No, sir. We'll just hold him accountable if it doesn't work out.
I feel good about it. Like I said, I haven't had anything in the past that sprung up there that they did cover. So if you look at those price differences between all of them.
Absolutely.
It's mind blowing. And I have noticed too that I think they're getting a lot of DOT projects and stuff now. Because I think they've been a wide form. Seven oh one, it seems like the past year, every time I go through there, I see a lot of their trucks in that area doing the same thing.
Mr. Smith. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract for Highland paving to take care of our paving on the San Dollar and Herring Drive.
I just have a question. I'm just curious. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
I'm just curious why this is so urgent? We had to put it on this meeting instead of waiting until next Tuesday.
Well, according to Highland paving, they've got a time slot here in the next few weeks. And if we could get it approved now, it would hurry up. If it would get them in there quicker than, rather than later. I wish it was possible. We could have asphalt down before Easter, but it always works out. Paving approved shows up when the people show up, and it just makes it more difficult. It didn't work. So that was the reason for having it on this meeting rather than the next one. And I actually requested that of Christie, so.
No, I approved it. I'm just curious what made it so urgent.
Yeah, I thought the better we could, whether we get it to have the better.
Anybody else question?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to ask the motion maker in the second if they would add the last part of the recommended motion down there to include the town manager completing associated paperwork. If y'all would okay that revision to the motion.
Yes, ma'am. I would. I'd be more than happy to with my motion, Mr. Mayor. May I add that?
Yes, sir.
Include the town manager completing the associated paperwork, please. Mr. Parkes.
I agree.
All right, we keep on moving. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. If I ever say no, unanimous. Number four, Mr. Mayor.
How do I get them all?
Moving on to the budget.
Yeah. I guess I'll punt this one to Christie. Is that appropriate?
Yes, sir. You all have in your packets the goals and objectives as we understood as your consensus from the last meeting. Today kicks off exploring expenditures, which we highlighted your major ticket items in the last workshop for the ones that we knew to kind of give you a preview. Salaries are included based on a two and a half percent merit and a two and a half percent cola. There's quite a few people that are also looking at coming out of their probationary period. So that's also reflected in the salary lines from where we've had turnover and they're reaching their probationary period mark. We can either tonight go forward with you all asking specific questions as you found in your review of the line in the budget. Or staff can highlight anything significantly different in their budgets from last year. It's up to what the board preferences.
Mr. Parkes.
Let me back up just a second to our goals. Chris, as we discussed, one of our goals is to make sure that we have our capital reserves for water and sewer will meet our near term and future needs. And I just want to make sure that you recognize that. And if there needs to be something in the budget, we get something in there. And go ahead.
Now, you're talking about equipment wise, right?
No, I saw about just what we talked about a little earlier, to make sure that we're collecting enough money for those midterm and future needs. And if, and I'm, what I'm asking basically, do you have a budget need to work on that goal for this year? Or is it, as I mentioned, is it more of a planning exercise at this phase?
What you've got right now is basically what we've had every year. It's pretty much just covering our expenses, what it's going to take to operate for next year. Now, when you say, you know, creating funds for future needs, I think that all depends on just how far that you want to take that. I'll use, for example, you know, we know we're going to need a water tower soon. Do we want to try to set up a structure to create funding for that now? Or what? As far as coming up with some money or something to address all the needs of the future, with one budget here. I mean, I'm probably saying this wrong, but I don't really, I'm kind of, you know, like I said, it's sort of what you want planned. I would love to see us set up where we could actually create like a repair and replacement fund of what we thought we were going to need, you know, we have expensive equipment like trucks, generators, and some pricey equipment, vacuum truck, stuff like that. You know, we know it's going to, if we look in our CIP plan in ten years from now, we're going to need to replace it. I'd love to see a rate structure or something that would support that. I mean, that's not the way I know to do what you're asking if I'm, unless I'm confused and thinking something totally different.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get to because we have this goal, and it's a great goal. But how are we going to achieve it when we say just plan for the future? So.
Could I say something?
Yes, sir.
If we look through our budget and see where we are, and then, you know, we're naturally going to have budget workshops. I'm sure after this, there'll probably be several more meetings. But we kind of got to figure out where we're going to go before I can, we can come up with something, you know. For example, you know, say, well, we won't set two hundred thousand dollars a year aside, you know. We'd have to have a rate structure to support that. Right now, all I've got is the sewer water capacity fees. And I really don't have no control of, you know, just Governor Chris Paul, looking what we played here before, of what it's going to be.
So I'm trying, and I'll try to be clear and I apparently have not been. But in order to do those things you said, is that something that you were going to need funding, support, as in a contract? Or is this something we kind of sit down, scratch our heads over?
I don't think it would take funding.
Okay.
If you look at your revenues and you look at your expenses, if you're just coming out breaking even, naturally, you're going to have to look at rates or something other to get there.
Okay, so.
Excuse me.
So basically, what I'm hearing is you're aware of the goal, but you don't need money for it this year. We've got to sit down and figure out exactly where we're going to go.
Yeah, exactly. You know, like, I'll use the county for example, you know, I got all those sewer things and stuff. And they do a deal there where they got their rates set up and it's rate stabilization. They got their sewer rates set where if there's extra funds coming in on their sewer rate, they set that aside for repair and replacements. That way, you've got a big piece of equipment or something that's going to have to be replaced two years, that's right, the funding was there.
Yeah.
You know, water tower, for example, you know, we know it's going to be five years before you need a water tower. And they have to make it cost three million dollars. But we can do the math and figure out what we're going to have to take to integrate that. And, you know, I don't think it's that hard, and I don't really think it's going to take outside sources. I think it'd be pretty simple, but I could be, I could be totally wrong.
Yeah, we had an audit committee meeting this morning. We were focused on the SEP and kind of reporting long term. And Dan, I'm going to call on you because this topic came up about rates in terms of, you know, one thing is to fund based on available money. But something else to say, we need more money going forward, which would get into a whole rate discussion. So I guess I'm seeing this as the first step to figure out if we need to touch our rates.
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Chris and I have had a couple of different meetings, and he's actually not giving himself enough credit right this second because I think he thought we would get more into this with revenues versus expenditures discussion. But he's been doing some analysis of other communities, and he's ahead of the ballgame. And actually, he has some things to propose to you in the discussion. So I think the answer to all your questions are yes, and he's just trying not to barrel full speed ahead into that conversation. But no, I don't think we'll need contracted services because he's been looking at what other people are charging. And yes, you'll probably see some discussion regarding a change in rates to try to plan for the future.
I've got a little careless. It'll be in a bit. I'll put that away without just. Thank you, Christie.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Wow. Okay. Mr. Smiles, are we, do we have anything else to talk about?
I think, I think we're going through.
Okay, let's go page by page. And if we have any questions, we ask you.
That's fine.
So I think the first one's twenty-five.
Yes, that's the first page I have.
Right, okay.
The only thing I've got on that is just what is the debt book expenses?
Debt book's a software that handles our GAZB eighty-seven, GAZB ninety-six compliance, and that's our reporting.
So this is a software license for debt?
No, no, not a software license. They handle the GAZB requirement to report on leases and FDITA suppression base technology.
Okay, so it's under professional services. It's a service they provide. Okay, thanks. I just didn't know what it was.
Quick question, Heather. I guess you're the right one to address. On our camera system, what's been the feedback on that? Have we heard anything? People like it? It's working good?
I haven't heard too much, but everything I've heard has been positive. So.
Okay, good.
Actually, I did just get a quote to go to the next step. We're just going to add a little bit more. So we're working on that, and that's why we kept a little bit of money in it for the following year. So we can see if we want to keep making little improvements along the way.
Great. It would be nice to have that problem finally solved.
Absolutely.
All right, next page. Anybody?
Yep.
Well, I guess I just had a question on gen set. I mean, what, I thought we did something relatively recently with the generator set?
It's just for the maintenance.
Just maintenance? It's not a new one or anything? Okay.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Twenty-eight. I have a question for Daniel on twenty-eight on the financial advisory. Is that something that you, typically we've had in the past? Because I would think that would be something that you would be able to handle.
That's, that's a bond council typically, if something comes up where we need to go out and borrow.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I don't have anything else on that page. Yep.
All right, chief. Can you tell me if the funding for our four initiatives for recruitment and retention are included in this budget?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
And that's what that federal enforcement support services made? That's a new ten thousand dollars. Is that related to that or is that separate?
So that's separate. That's the Humvees that we got on the federal LESs program. And just to make it cleaner, we're just looking to break that out into its own separate line. Because the federal government with tracking purposes, they want to see every penny, you know, that's spent on those Humvees or any of that stuff, so.
And we're down to one or we still have two?
We still have two, but I think I was not able to make the last one. I think Lieutenant Dilworth kind of explained to you our plan. We're planning on getting rid of one and trying to get a LM, whatever. I can't remember the initials. They got some, yeah, LMTV, that's the one. So, yes. But I think it'll be more applicable to what we do here on the island and give us a variety with the Humvee and one of those.
It was kind of significant on the ground.
Correct, correct.
And did we get the one painted or?
Yes, yes.
I don't have anything on it.
You go to thirty.
Oh.
Anybody got anything on thirty?
Nope.
Thirty-one.
Nope.
Thirty-two.
Nope.
Yep.
Thirty-three.
I've got one. So it's half of the, this is the buildings, grounds, maintenance, SCP supervision, I guess, or supplies. Half the cost of town hall is the landscaping, and then the other half is where? I guess.
B part.
B part.
And B part.
Jordan Mulvar Maintenance Ops.
Okay.
I have a question, Chris, on the bulkheads. Are we going to do one of those this year? Because I see we haven't spent any money yet for this year. Perfect. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Perfect. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smiles.
So is this a good time to talk a little bit about street sweeping here towards the bottom? I've heard a lot. I've watched a lot. I mean, they went by my house like five times with that big thing. I mean, is this really the way to clean it or is there a cheaper way to?
That's the only way I know to clean it, Tom. But I think what you'll see as he starts doing it regular, it'll get better.
Okay.
There was a lot of elevation difference between those driveways and stuff, and it was caused by a lot of it running back. So he actually done like you said, three or four times. But I think every time we get, I think you'll see it get better.
Yeah, it kind of like looked good, then looked worse, then looked, you know, depending on where it was going.
I liked to have a heart attack the first time I saw you say it.
Oh, I, we followed him.
Believe me, I said, oh, my God, this ain't the beginning of the problem. But he was, he did, he come back and he got it. Like I said, I think the more we do with the bedroom, but you got to think that thing is like there about a year and a half. All those storms and gather up, it was a lot of debris.
It was, and that was quite a truck that was doing it. I guess the question that people have asked me is like, can we just do it with a broom every now and then with one of our?
Well, I was thinking about the deal with the broom though, Tom, if you've not got anything sucky to up when they're sweeping. And it just, it just, it's going all over the side, and then it's on everybody's concrete driveway. And then that, that would just be a total nightmare. So I think we're, we're doing just what we need to do, and I feel pretty confident you'll see that get better.
We're picking it up and taking it away. Is that?
Yeah, we just, we didn't pull it on the beach, but we actually pulled it down to the lay down yard. We got stopped by.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, the, yes, the feedback that I've gotten is good on the white lanes. But there seems to be some debris that gets up onto the sidewalk, you know, it's up a tremendous amount of it. And some of it gets on the sidewalk. Usually, I have asked in the past the town manager to, to ask y'all to sleep in the sidewalks every now and then because they get covered in sand after storms and talk of our, especially the areas that have water standing. Is that going to be something that'll be done in unison with this to keep the sidewalk in good shape for?
Well, I can't promise it'll be in unison for that, but we'll do the best. We'll try to do better again. And it really revolves around having enough employees that you can devote to that. Because what happens in my world, you know, even though I won't be on the sidewalk today, tomorrow, I've got something going on in the water and sewer. And it just, it is kind of cumbersome. But yes, it's not no big deal. We're taking a whole lot of equipment. I'd actually had this discussion with a fellow sitting behind me a little while back. If we could, you know, if we could ever get everything right in winter time, it'd be nice to have a good little age, y'all live sidewalks. Being we're talking sidewalk, I did up the funding just a little bit in sidewalks here where maybe we could replace more of it. I figured everything that was going on with the handicap issues, people tripping and falling, that we got a pretty good bit of broken sidewalks up and give us an opportunity to pull more of it.
Yes, sir. So far, it looks like y'all done a good job. I think some of the residents, including myself, we try to keep the sidewalks in, in our areas as clear as possible.
Oh, yeah.
Are we through with thirty-three?
Yep.
Thirty-four. Anything on thirty-four?
Well, the first line, Core Storm Project, I guess I'm, I understand we got the, we did the stormwater management. We identified projects. I didn't know we'd committed to the core.
Well, we haven't committed to the core yet, but that's your only federal funding stream. So that is disaster relief dollars that I told you guys about, the two point two million. You have to do a partnership with the core for that funding. They're supposed to be coming to the May meeting, which I think I included in the email to you guys to present. And they will have a draft partnership agreement for you to consider at the meeting.
April, May.
So this will be to do the first three projects in the stormwater, the three hundred block, the mullet.
Three hundred block.
Mullet, I think, and.
The, just had that pulled up, the three hundred block. Then area two was the east end of mullet and east end of Avenue A.
So we have other opportunities, though, I think, coming up that might be state funded?
Yes.
So I just wonder if we should take the core off of there and just put stormwater project?
If you just want to mark the word core out, you can. The reason for the three hundred thousand number is that of the two point two million dollar price tag, our engineer thinks that that's the amount we can get through next year with permitting and design. Because you guys are going to have to go through a NEPA process if we use the federal government. And so, and you'll still have to go through permitting if you use the state. So three hundred thousand was the amount that they thought we could get through. I was very, Chris and Chris, Chris and Chris can attest to the fact that I was very adamant in our meetings that I needed a solid number because we didn't want to go in with a two point two number if we would not potentially get through that amount this year.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I guess if it's just notes and comments, my preference would be to take it out because stormwater is a big item. And as Tracy said, I think we want to pursue everything we can.
So you don't mind the amount? You just don't want the word core in there?
That's correct. Yep. Stormwater projects, because there's three of them really.
Anything else on thirty-four? Going to thirty-five. Anything on thirty-five? Thirty-six.
Hold on, I'm catching up here. Thirty, the rollback service, half the rollback of twenty-five thousand.
Are you on thirty-five?
I'm on thirty-four still, sorry. No, thirty-five. I'm on thirty-five. So that's, and then half's in B part? Is that the same kind of thing? Okay. Whenever I see half, it's like, where's the other half? Okay.
Can I ask a question, Chris? Are you, I know one of the comments that someone made that we needed more stuff on the east end around some of those parking lots or on the beach, more garbage cans. Do we have that in here anywhere to?
I.
Budget? Oh, sorry. Yeah, Christie?
Yeah, a lot of the garbage cans on the beachfront are most all of the garbage cans unless we need to split it comes from the B part budget. And so some have already been purchased that got gone down and been placed on the east end for additional trash cans down there. And there's also trash cans in the access and recreation line of next year's budget.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Never mind, Chris.
Anybody else on thirty-five? We're going to thirty-six. Anybody?
No.
Thirty-seven. Thirty-eight.
Okay, so this is, this is where we're getting into water. Is this where we're getting into, what we're just to talk about water expenses? Well, I, the way we left it, I think, Christie, if I, where you made your comments was there's potentially so many expenses here, we need to think about raising rates with the revenue. Is that, I mean, does this expense total?
Well, the expenses and revenues equal out right there.
Okay.
Okay.
No, they don't.
That's the question.
But we're going to see that next time.
Well, well, well.
I can't wait to see. Especially not told you that when it lets members work.
I think that when you see revenues versus expenditures, next time you're going to see a need to want to make some sort of change. And it's going to be validated by what you see from the research that Mr. Clemmons has done.
Can I also deliver some more bad news?
Bring it on.
Where I said we wouldn't need a generator, I really think we won't need another generator for our sewer lift stations. But I do have one right now that's not behaving like it should. And it looks like one of our better generators, just looking at it, it could even go for five or ten more years. But I've had several people there trying to resolve this issue, and I've yet to be able to get it resolved.
Which one is?
Right up here at the floor. I meant one. That generator looked good, although they don't really get the solid air because it's not set on the ocean front. And according to my guy that has the, he's got the maintenance contract, he says he's loaded tested that generator and it's putting out a hundred and twenty-five percent. And I ain't disputing, but I didn't see him play or do it. And I've actually seen somebody load his generator before. And the one I seen that got tested, it was ended about eight foot tall, was about eight foot five. It had a bunch of heating holes in it. And I'm kind of questioning whether, what he tested it with. And I've also had a diesel mechanic there looking at the boot of the generator. And I've also had a, a diesel mechanic there looking at the boot of the generator, making sure the R P N stuff, right? Right now, I'm only running seven, four pumps in there, which is not good. So I'm still in the process. If I can get that straightened out in the next few days, looking at the generator, the generator looks, looks fine. If it don't work, then it ain't working.
So this kinda,
Yes, sir.
Goes back to what we were talking about earlier, which is you may wanna put a generator, not this year, but a year out. Or, I mean, this is a capital approval plan thing now, right? Do we need to?
If I could get it repaired, I'd be good like it is, but I'm not gonna take, I'm not gonna, if we don't get it repaired and we go in storm season there with no generator there, we're at mercy. They have to put a rental on site there and I wouldn't want to do that. But maybe in the next few weeks, maybe I can get it resolved. I'm doing everything I can.
Okay. I, I just hitting on this relationship between budgeted expenses we're gonna spend versus capital budgets we know are coming, but are not in this budget.
And with that being said, um, maybe I'm jumping too far ahead of myself, but like our, our, uh, operation and maintenance money for our vacuum stations instead of, I actually, I, I went up ten percent on load. If I didn't know, you know, what everybody was gonna do with inflation. And this may be scare tactics. But today I get word from a, from a salesman that they're getting worse, they're getting told that fifteen and eighteen percent was there. So I don't know where that's headed to. That may be just something that goes away in a few days, but I just wanted to, to let that be known, that I didn't put that kinda factor in.
The, well, Christie.
No, I was just wanna say for clarification to your statement, Tom, I, I think what Chris is saying, unless I've missed what he said, is that he doesn't have the generator proposed in the expenses right now that he's telling you about, but that depending on what shakes out in the next week, it may be added to these expenses the next time it comes around. So it would actually be for this upcoming fiscal year, not in the C I P for the year after, like I was thinking, I was just hearing you say.
I don't know when, but yeah, I mean,
Yeah.
To me,
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
If it's not by June of twenty-six, then it needs to be in the SIP so that we have it out there. And, and then back to one of the original discussions, so if I total up all this, two point eight million total expenditure, given our current water rates, will we bring in the revenue to cover that? Yes? Okay, so we are looking at a rate increase.
So can I ask a question? If I look at what's our full year budget, it's the three point one six seven six eleven. And we've only spent one point seven nine one. So we have one million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand left to spend this year in the next four months. Is that correct? Right, so March, April, May, June, four months. So are we gonna spend one point three seven six million in the next four months? So? Well, I mean, you could go through all these, you know, every one of these, I didn't say, it, I'm just saying, there's a lot of money left in this year that hasn't been spent and we only have four months left to spend. Obviously, you're gonna pave some streets and, maybe do a bulkhead. And so, I mean, some of it will be spent, but there might be some leftover to go towards what Chris is saying if he needs a new generator right now.
I've still got a little bit more stock that I need to get back on the shelf before, you know, before we can have everything up.
I, I understand, but that's still a lot of money to spend in four months.
This is a real drag.
All right, ready to go to next page? Thirty-nine?
Yep.
Anybody got anything on thirty-nine?
We're paying off the vacuum truck.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, Mr. Parker. So Chris, now that we get the back truck paid off, just out of curiosity, how long before we might need to replace that?
I'm thinking it, it may be five years or better. And the reason I say that, I think there's a magic number there where you can get rid of that truck. And not, and get a lot of trade-in value for it. That was a half a million dollar truck originally. And we traded our own when we got it. And I don't remember what that total price tag was, but I don't think we need them for no sooner than five years. I mean, naturally, we don't want to run it to fall to pieces, you know, get any kind of return on it. But it's, it's holding up well so far. It's still been a pretty good check.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't like, great, we got it paid off. And then a year from now, we're like, gotta get another one. All right, thank you.
I will say, have to say too, it's, it's, I know a lot of people don't like to hear that word lease purchase deal there, but that's, that's saving grace on something. That costs that big. Like, you know, you see what our payment is, six, four thousand dollars a year. And if I had to go without a vacuum truck right here, the day would be my last day on those vehicles.
You've said that before.
That has been a lifesaver, the saving grace there to part.
All right, anybody else on page thirty-nine? On forty? Anybody got it on forty?
I guess I just had a general question. We have like storm survey, that's for if the hurricane comes and we need to call ATM out to do a survey, or is that?
Yeah, those are the extra after what we pay. So your normal annual monitoring is up in professional services where it says out to the side in the detail, thirty thousand annual monitoring.
Yep.
And this is if we are having, uh, after storm and need to do surveys in order to qualify for FEMA. And if you look at what we put out in the news this week, they're calling for an overactive storm season. So trying to have the budget so that we're ready to respond.
So you doubled that from last year though? I mean, they said the same thing last year, right?
They did, but one storm is fifteen thousand and that was the rates that were last time. I don't know if they're gonna go up any. So I'm just trying to make us prepared. Um, we can take it back down and, and add to the budget if you guys decide you want to do that and only budget for one, but.
Well, the thirty thousand just kinda jumped at me because I saw it's like, it, it's there for annual monitoring. It was there for storm survey, depth of closure, planting, survey transect. There's three of them seem like they were survey related. I just was probing on what makes them different. And did they all end up at thirty thousand? Or is that just a good?
The last time that we did the, the depth of closure surveys, they were fifteen each and yes, annual monitoring's thirty.
Okay, and then the, the survey transects on the next page, forty-one?
That's actually for the engineer. So the first one on professional services is for ATM to do the analysis.
Okay.
Coastal Geomatics comes out and sets the transects and runs them and that's your shoreline monitoring.
Okay.
On the next page that you're asking about.
Don't jump to the next page.
Well, I, I, I'm just trying to find all the thirty thousands and understand.
Are we on forty or forty?
I'm jumping back and forth between them. I'm on forty, but there's also was, I had a question, or part of this goes to forty-one for the, beach monitoring transects on the, on the west end, right? Those are the ones that?
Several years ago, we added, um, five additional on the west end and that note is, is picked up. So we're not adding any additional this time on the west end unless it comes to us and says we need to do something. Um, if you, also in that professional services beach, I mean, you are having storm survey to depth of closure, but if we have to end up doing some more analysis on the west end, you could always pull that from that line as well. So anything that continues to develop, to develop, not on that end.
And I, and I read the, Brinway's report and it sounded like one of the transects down there passed the trigger point and may need follow-up. Is that?
Yeah, he's still monitoring. He, he potentially thinks that any of the issue that we're seeing down there actually came from, uh, where the dredging occurred so deeply in the inlet before and not related to any groin issues, but we're still monitoring.
They're kinda related in that they're dredging to fill the ground, right? So that, that's, that wasn't dredging for navigation, that was dredging for sand, I think. Okay, I, I just curious what these all were and, it'd be nice if there's, I don't, you know, this is all related to one thing, but it's, it's kinda hitting five or six, four or five different, um, line items, which makes it hard to understand how much we're actually spending for ATM and beach engineering.
I mean, in professional services, you have another ten thousand for attorney fees, but I saw that somewhere else too. So you split that up into across?
I don't have any more attorney fees, but there, our, our attorney fees are put across different departments. Cause our attorney may work on something that's related to, like when she just worked on block Q for the contract, that's a B part fund. When she works on most of y'all's stuff, it's governing bodies. So if it's plugged to, if she working on something for Tim, it comes from his department.
Got it. And can I ask you about, um, the Warden Smith seemed to jump up quite a bit?
Yeah, but if you look at the description out to the side,
Yes.
Last year, forty-six, nine of that amount was paid from canal dredging. And now it's not because they're not working on that as a federal priority anymore. So it's actually their contract didn't change.
Got it. Okay. Forty?
All right, room forty-one? Have I got anything on forty-one? No, we're going forty-two. Anything on forty-two, Mr. Parker?
One thing, Christie, on the concert venue cost estimate, uh, as we discussed, you found a number and escalated by three percent. I would just.
Ocean Isles number that they use for their dance floor and their, um, stage.
Okay, um, and I think that's excellent. It's just having done some research on construction price escalation, seems to me that eight percent was a more standard number. I don't know if you know anything about that. I'm not asking to spend more money. I'm just, make sure we get a, a good shot at it.
And I'm happy to increase that. Um, I didn't know how, what, how much contention would be and it being much more than that, especially based on what prices we got back for the bathroom facility that we're building on site. So I kinda use that as a judge and a gauge also. But I'm happy to increase it and take it to an eight percent increase if that's what we want.
How many years was it escalated over?
They just built theirs last year, I think.
So it's two years, let's say? Um, it's easier to give the money back than ask for it again. So I'd, uh, I would, if the rest of the board agrees, I would change that and escalate it, uh, for an eight percent.
It's just gonna come out of the two hundred for appropriation, right?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's just gonna de- decrease your amount for appropriation. So you either have it on the front side or the back side. You have, if the contract were to come back and it was more than that amount, you could use move available to appropriate paper, or you could change that amount now and I'm just wanna decrease that amount. So.
Uh, how do you wanna do it? What's best for you then?
I'll increase the amount. That's what the board wants, has consensus.
Well, I want, well, we, we want what's gonna work easiest for you, I think.
Um, I'll increase it by eight percent over their number.
Okay.
All right, you ready for forty-three?
No.
All right, Mr. Myers?
So we have nothing for the pier? I understand when?
That was my question, sir.
I did not. I decided that if y'all think you're gonna do anything for construction for the pier, that you could direct me to put that in the budget, but until you get a plan back and you have a number to put there, I, I mean, it would've been like going and trying to put something down on a sheet of paper. Um, the number, and Mr. Parfus asked me this specific question, your engagement letter that H C R sent. He also hadn't provided, I'd asked for a what will you spend after June thirty? His number was seventy-five, but based on where we are in the timeline, I increased it to ninety to try to cover anything that they may not get in. So ninety thou, seventy-five was his projection of what he would spend next year still on his contract. But I took it in this budget, the ninety, because I was afraid that the, the timeline would be a little off than when he first said that. Something would miss and I would rather have more than less in there. So there's ninety thousand in there to finish their engineering. And then our normal expenses down there, but for construction, I haven't, if y'all wanna give me a number, I'd be happy to put it down.
Nope. I don't think that.
I'm not giving up yet. So I'll, I'll ask Mr. Parfus, the man with, they're doing a estimate level design, is that correct?
So let's? Right, what they're doing is preliminary design. It's gonna be typically like a thirty percent not design. So from there, they will go on to the ninety percent design or the, the complete design. If that's where we're gonna go, once we decide what.
And is that in here or that's a separate contract?
No, that's, we would probably modify the, do a mod to the existing contract.
That number, thirty percent is in the ninety thousand dollars.
Correct.
All I'm trying to do is get to, let's assume we're going forward. What's the next step? It's not construction yet, but there's a final design, right, or something?
Right, right. You gotta eventually finish the design, produce plans and specs, so you got something to bid.
Okay, so is that what should be in here, assuming we're going forward?
Why would you assume that?
Well, I, because if we don't, we keep the money. If we don't have the money and we need it, we don't have it. So we're trying to put in here enough to cover a step should we take it. It's always easy to not spend. Not gonna be easy to get the money if we didn't. I'm just asking because.
Yeah, I'm sitting there thinking if we need to put a placekeeper in there.
Cause I assume we would go to full design or something. And that's not a multimillion dollar thing, that's?
No, no, um.
I, I feel like we'd have to make a decision before we would go to that next step. And, we're not ready to make that kinda decision.
For budgeting purposes, so we've got things accounted for, I would suggest that we try to put a wedge in. The hard part is, it's like, well, you consider ten to fifteen percent of the project cost and the engineering cost, but we don't have the project cost. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing. Um, I would suggest just now putting in another ninety grand there for doing detailed plans and specs. So we'll have something there. And Christie, I would ask, um, could you check with H G R and see if they've got any kinda thought on that?
So that is if you're going to some sort of design.
Right, if we go, yep, build us, I'm gonna say the wooden pier. Let's go ahead and get plans and specs together. That's what we wanna do.
So just so you know, and that, I'm putting that in there, but you will realize then your available to appropriate lines gone down accordingly.
Yes.
So that you guys don't then ask me at the next one if I happen to available to appropriate.
And, and do we know that is the available to appropriate number?
Pretty close.
Okay.
In comparing the revenues and the expenditure, we're getting there, um, and you'll have it in front of you next week.
Okay, well, it's something I think we all agree we're gonna wanna move forward with, or at least plan to move forward with. So we oughta have it in the budget so we don't go spend it on something else. Agreed?
I, I agree. And I, I mean, I hate to even say it, but it's the optics of not having there kinda sends a message, we're not planning to go forward. And that's not gonna be a nice response.
Uh, and, and till we say we're not, I think we should. I think, um, and we should have it in the budget. So like I said, we don't go spend it as available to appropriate on something else of a lower par.
Cause what, you know, once again, if we don't, I mean, we can move it within the, right, we can move, it'll either fall a fund balance or we, divert it to use on something else. So it's not like we're putting in a capital reserve fund for that only, it's.
I think it's good to have it there and display. That's, that's what our intention is. Okay?
We need a consensus or is that good? We're talking, take ninety out of, take, so the available for appropriation goes down to one-ten and we got ninety in pier.
Yeah, it'll go down by more than that because she's taking another five percent for your concert venues.
Everybody comfortable with that? That doesn't give us much of a?
Basically, you review that, explain it.
Sure. Initially, the room forty-one professional services included what the engineer had, um, said in their letter, which I did send him an additional email today that says, hey, this is what you said initially, but we're finalizing budget documents. Can you tell me if that number changed for what you expect to spend after June thirty? So of course his response may change that number too, but ninety thousand was in there. I've been asked by consensus to add ninety thousand in anticipation of potentially going to design specifications and following up with the. and following up with the engineer to see if that seems like an appropriate number for next week's discussion. And that means that in turn, available to appropriate, we go down to account for that and also for the increase for the concert venue.
Okay, so that would get added to four forty-one professional services. And really, we ought to just take the pier, Reno and repair out because that was the repair option. Is that, but I guess that's the one I was looking at that had a blank and I guess.
Yeah, that was when it was the repair option and it was going to construction two years ago, so.
Okay.
So I would recommend we change that so that it's clear that it's.
Better catch would go away, yeah. And then, so, yeah. Because I was reacting to the blank, but there wasn't a blank, there was ninety. So I guess, but we still would need an extra ninety if we wanted to take the next step, so.
Right, that's what she's saying.
Okay. Sorry if I confused it.
You understand what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
All right. I guess. At least three want to do that. Yeah, all right. Okay, we're going to forty-three? Anything on forty-three? And that's forty-four?
Nope. Canal funds, right?
And forty-five?
Nope.
Forty-six? I'll lose.
Internet.
Good, can I, I'll say on forty-six. So these canal funds, basically, it's that construction, it's not probably going to occur if we don't have a project. It's just there to balance the budget, knowing full well it's going to fall to their fund balance.
Yes, and so it can be shovel-ready. So if there is, the surveys are about to take place in the next week and if there are issues that are observed, our survey group will consult with the engineer and the engineer will then recommend action. So you're ready should there need to be dredging.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor, say aye. Thank all of you for being here.